Hello and welcome to the East Lampeter Township Public Meeting. All participants are now informed that this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is also being offered virtually utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferencing. The Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through the Internet or by calling in by phone. The public is also able to observe the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Agendas for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website. Please be reminded that this meeting is being video and audio recorded and will be posted to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. The meeting will now proceed with the chairman calling the meeting to order and identifying all other members present in the meeting room and those joining the meeting via Zoom. The chairman will then confirm those members joining by Zoom can be heard.
Also in attendance this evening on this side of the table is Dan McEwen, Commission Member, Sarah Ryder, Commission Member, Roger Rutt, Commission Member, Colin C. Salz, Zoning and Planning Director, Dan Sinopoli, Assistant Zoning Officer, Alicia Hare and LaShonda from the township. We have one member not present tonight, he was unable to attend, Randy Patterson. I believe we have some people on Zoom, so we are mic'd up and when you speak this evening, if you could use the mic, so that it can, it's also being recorded, so that would be appreciated from all of us that are speaking. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order and we start with the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It might not have been on. So we have an agenda for the evening meeting, please have copies if you pick them up. First item of business is approval of the minutes for the August 10th planning commission meetings. Are there any comments on the minutes from this side? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, the second.
Second.
We have a motion and the second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, standing none. Thank you. Under old business, none this evening. We're on to new business and first item is plan number 2021-17 Greenfield North Phase 3, the final land development plan.
Always have to do that.
Yes. And if you could identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Mark Stan. With me tonight, Tony Dykes and Brad Gray. My property, it's zooming in and looking over us from the wall, so we'll have to keep an eye on that and make sure that we cross our feet without our eyes. Also with me today is Dave Miller, the two associates, the two associates is the project engineer and land plant for the Greenfield North Project. Greenfield North Project with the multifamily and the townhouse project. Prior to this meeting, you will see the DMA letter, review number two, dated September 9, 2021. I also received the planning department's letter, the mission letter, that will be the plan that we'll be discussing tonight. Generally, so you were aware, but I'd like to briefly discuss some of the points of the DMA letter. The site letter, which is to my right, and we power on set, that you put up on screen. That's the colored site letter, okay, three. And at the end of that presentation, I'd like Tony to grant the review of the elevation onto the multifamily product, the month of the townhouse. Regarding the DMA letter, it is review number two. Generally, the comfortable comments, the first part of the letter today is customary reviews of number of modification requests and accepts for modifications. Number four, you recommend approval of the modification or recommend approval subject to this. Regarding number three, this relates solely to our frontage, Willow Road. Number three is a request for a waiver for widening. Number four, which we'll talk about briefly afterwards, is a request for a waiver for disurbing. Now, with respect to the first, which is modification number three, we have discussed this with staff. And I think Colin can support this after I require the planning commission. We understand that patch of staff is in support of the waiver of widening on Willow Road. The justification, as shown in our letter and as depicted on the plan, is the urban growth boundary runs right down the center to the north of Willow Road, pretending it's a river. And the development, what was formerly known as the patch border, the trucks that are generated by that are completely de-escalated. Are all due access Greenfield Road, Route 30, and ultimately, all the street construction. So based on that justification, we have provided additional widening. That in the future, if there needs to be anything, the right of way is replaced and it's in the hands of the township. We ask for a waiver just because of the potential development. In this situation, we just don't believe it is necessary. We understand that patch of steps, board step. With respect to number four, that is curving, we also had a discussion with township staff and have been advised that the stormwater purposes also tie into some of the curving and then the fact that both sides, they will not support the waiver for curving on Willow Road. After those discussions, we decided to draw our request for a waiver, simply to refer with respect to curving, at which time, curving is called with staff. As to location, we've got a waterline, in Willow Road, so where we place that curving and where we place that tillow line, it's just something that we would doubt in townhouse. The other modification requests we're comfortable with, DMA and micro medical, suitable. Under zoning, Dave Miller has discussed all the comments. It's not pain, comfortable, that we'll be simply addressing those comments, but no issue with respect to all. We'd like to point out, your comment number three of zoning, page five, we'll simply be asking for a slightly reduction in parking under the zoning limits. You can add to 20% reduction, park it up to the 20% reduction, based upon the situation. We're simply asking for more, for a 2%, 3% reduction by proving plan, township proving that. That ties directly to the, what's titled here, the community center. It's simply an amen, building for residents and township, but if you look at it separately, you have to allocate so many parking spaces to it. Since it's only available as an amen, this residence, the cars that it uses are already there. People are likely blocking, trying, or they drive, they open up this box for the sense, some of those. So we're simply asking for that slight 2% reduction tied to the amenities there. Under subdivision, again, we have no comments. We're comfortable progressing the comments that remain in respect of the DMA letter. We ask that ultimately, planning commission for a particular nature of approval plan, separate to staff. Regarding the extra county, we're purpose of the additions to the, to what Dave was talking about. Comments one and two. Those comments talk about connecting paths and extending directions in some of that townhouses. Also continuing to adjust the path, and I like to talk about geography, how the site is laid out, why that's just not possible. So ultimately, we'd be asking that comments one and two are making our plan purpose for that, so the final. Okay, if you could get with the view of the site management, that's what I'm thinking. Just walk the, I was expecting, like, road, just to be exact, to any aspect of the township.
To give you a brief overview of the project, we are posing five multifamily buildings. Those are the three large buildings at the top. And then there are two smaller L-shaped buildings toward the bottom. These larger units, larger buildings have under 160 units, usually five stories. You have the smaller buildings that have seven units, four stories. Overall, there are five of eight, seven apartments within these five buildings. As marked, so there's the amenity building for the use of residents, and there's portable pool. As that along Willow Road, here is our four townhome buildings, seven in each, so 28 townhomes total. So five of eight, seven apartments in 28 townhomes, six of them, which are, of course. With a little bit of the background, north, we refer to north as the point of this plan, Willow Road, falls along the top, south along that Willow Road, east and west on the north side. Ben Franklin Boulevard was constructed with the basis of this development property and proposed accesses to this development, there is an access up to Ben Franklin Boulevard, and that two accesses are for growth. So that's a general overview of the project. Mark asked me to speak to the two of the extra county, county comments. Number one is a suggestion that the paths, the pathway be provided from the townhome area up to the pedestrian path along Willow Road. I'll point out that this, including with this project, is a pedestrian path that runs back to Boulevard, along the Marion Quarter, and along Willow, and that's great. So we include this path, this part of the project. The county suggested that additional paths be provided between the buildings and from a geographical rating standpoint, it's from that practical, the townhomes have exposed lower level of garages. And then in the back of the units, toward Willow, is the first floor. So in between those buildings are two little slopes, 10, 12 foot of elevation change. So it's from that practical to provide those connections, or there are connections from from the front of the buildings to this path, which goes back actually to Paul's sentence. So there is ready access for the residents exposed to the, of the, of the. The second comment was a suggestion that this, there be a connection from the pedestrian path from this point along Willow and down to Ben Franklin Boulevard, the north side. That would require some, potentially some significant curving, environmental curving, because that would be a crossing of the tributary at this point. And so that, that's delays on the project, if it's approvals. And as I mentioned, there is plenty of pedestrian pathways out of our, in the, there. So that's no worries.
The bottom of that plan, that would be towards your east, those two L-shaped buildings, 56 rental units each, they also have underground parking. So four of these five apartment buildings have underground parking. I think it's important to note that, as, as part of the plan, so an important feature there. We talked about the amenity building, the community building, the community center, that is purely for the use and enjoyment of the residents. It's got to be great amenity for this community, the folks who use it, again, are only residents of this community. That's what it's intended for, and it's got some great features for them, between a fitness center, yoga room, clubhouse, business center. So it's purely for the enjoyment and the use of the residents of this community. The employees that, that will lease and manage this property are all going to be located in building one. So there will be no employees in that community building. Just wanted to amplify a couple of the points to this plan, we're really proud about it. A lot of work went into it, a lot of collaboration with the township. Certainly what you see tonight has benefited from that collaboration. I think there are, the column, you can pull up the elevation. My colleague.
Brad Beubert, I associates. This is the, if I could go to the actual elevations of the buildings, I just wanted to briefly touch on, I think also heard from my colleagues tonight. This is actually a picture of the, one of the townhouse buildings. There you go. You've got units contained within this stretch. This is as if you're standing on Willow Road facing the community, but it's out. So this is the two-story portion of the townhouses. And on the backside, which actually faces towards the U-shaped building, building one, there is intended to be underground parking for one car to go into their garage, which is contained. And so we intend to do here is really provide that nice transition between the buildings that are the larger apartment buildings and Willow Road as you kind of step down headed towards Willow Road to the north, towards the agricultural. So we're really providing this step in our, as you transition towards the north. If you go to the elevation, which is of the larger apartment building. The five-story elevator that links, there you go. There we go, all right. Thank you. So, so again, in keeping with the overall design features of the Great Field, we really do a great job trying to identify and articulate really nice architectural features that welcome people home. And that's truly how we operate in our buildings, we want them to feel like they're coming into a really happy place. So within this, you do have a five-story elevator building. It's very similar to, it's a different design, what we accomplished at the Reservate Greenfield, but in terms of massing and size, it's similar in that nature. And again, just really highlights transitional nature of the building. It's not contemporary, but it's also not a traditional looking building. So I think it really fits the community desires that we're seeing with the rest of the place. Again, each of the buildings will have two elevators in the library shaped buildings. They'll each have two elevators in the buildings that service all floors, which is great because it opens up a wider net of anyone can live on any floor within the community buildings. And then you also have the two small L-shaped buildings, they each are serviced by elevators. So every single one of the units can be rented for someone, I think that's just a great benefit for those folks that are looking for housing, that they think they're down to. So outside of that, we're open to answer any questions.
How does this address affordable housing? We have a, there's a shortage of affordable, affordable housing in Lake Stratanian. How's this address that? Yeah, I mean, you're very good-looking buildings and I have a thought that maybe they're going to be getting up there in the higher rents, maybe.
So, so housing is definitely neat and so more housing we can build, that's one of the best ways to stem and help with the housing supply because at the end of the day, more housing creates the opportunity for people to move up in their housing choices as well as allowing other folks to, if they're moving up in their housing choice from another community that they're currently living in or someone who might have more of that workforce housing need and being able to afford a different rent.
I'm concerned that there's no affordable housing now and, you know, the people are moving up, it's only going to be a few. And it's not opening up a whole lot, you know, possibly. I just didn't know, what are the rents being projected and how is that in line with rents generally? I don't have any clue what rents are going at this.
Right now, the rents that we're targeting here in keeping the Reserving Greenfield, which is the 82 unit project that we delivered in 2017. And again, as part of our overall portfolio, we do generally cater to workforce housing community. Our rents are typically in our existing portfolio, anywhere from 60% of the county AMI to 80% of AMI. So while it's not affordable housing or low-income housing, it is addressing, so.
AMI stands for what?
Area of need.
And how many bedrooms are these units, just curious?
It's a mix of studio, one bedroom, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms units. So what it does is it does allow for folks who are either working from home, they could rent a bedroom or one of them. You also have a mix of the units that are pre-bedrooms families and as well as the townhouses, which are pre-bedrooms to that fat. So really does cater to a wide variety of individuals that are considering for housing.
Reserve is the unit on Pitney. Your other building?
Yes.
That's one on Pitney.
That's one.
And that was all, one of another, adult units or were there families in there?
There, there are some families in there. There's an interesting stat that we talked about at a prior meeting, which was very few school-aged children that are in these market rate local family buildings that we built recently. Less than 2% of the units are occupied with school-aged children that not only in the reserve, I agree, but also the crossings for our two most recent projects here. But again, it does cater to individuals that are in a roommate situation. If it's a single person wanting one bedroom or even a family that would prefer three bedrooms, you do have all those options.
If I recall, the reserve will have just one and two bedrooms.
It has three bedrooms.
Oh, it does have three, okay. I'm thinking it had.
I have another question. So how, um, are you expecting traffic? Are you trying, thinking traffic's not going to primarily be on Willow? Traffic will be more on Greenfield and then out to thirty or the new, when the new extension is built.
Right, I think the line share, the traffic won't be coming in from thirty across Walnut Street. Built into, uh, Ben Franklin War, more of a real road, but I think the line share will be coming in.
I know you're not here, but the, I guess down Willow Road further, you know. And where you said you couldn't cross that, like that path over that little stream area. What's the plan for the, that parcel? Uh, I guess that's east of the townhouses on Willow Road. That whole parcel, do you have any idea? Cause that might have an effect on whether Willow Road should be widened or not. And if we waive that, uh, request rather than deferring it, we may be putting ourselves in a bind here where. Uh, I'm leaning towards deferring the widening of Willow Road until, you know, because we may want it widened after you develop. Further down, which we plan on doing. I'm just, I'm just raising this, so I'm just bringing this up here to, yeah. Further east on Willow Road, further east of Willow Road.
I think you call it lot five. And, and in part the response to, excuse me Dan, to the reply to the original, um, Dave Miller review letter. Uh, I think you indicated that the trail would be addressed in, when lot five was developed. Whenever that is in the future, when you'll be back from the plan for that parcel.
Well, they're saying, you know, the trail and what I was talking about a few different things. I'm talking about the widening a little bit, but the trail, they're saying they can't put it in almost regardless across that stream. I think that's what they said. I'm saying that they're asking also a, uh, uh, they don't want to widen Willow Road, period. And we may down the road want that widened after you develop east of the townhouse. I'm just saying, I, I, if, can you bring up the whole plan and see what it looks like? I mean, the, this, you know, the section. East of here, you have the whole thing. Okay. So when this gets developed over here, what effect will that have on Willow Road? That's what I'm saying.
Quite confident. Say this, this project has little to note.
The future one, the one, the, the, the. No, I, okay, but I'm saying, I'm, I'm talking about down here. Yeah. But I, okay, but I'm still, okay, I'm still leaning towards a deferral versus, yeah. Is that for just widening it in front of that part though? And not widening it all the way across?
This is, this is the overall.
Okay, that's what I want to see. Yes, okay.
And this is lot five.
Mm-hmm, right, right.
So phase two.
Right, right, right.
There was a referral of side one.
Of lot five. Okay, they say, when you put in lot five, they say you need to widen it. Just in front of lot five. Now it narrows back down to. Yeah, west of lot five to, uh, Greenfield. And I'm saying, if you're going to widen it in front of lot five, it should be widened all the way across. Possibly, possibly. And we need to leave, I, I would like to leave that option open to the, the commission or to the township supervisors at that point. So that's why I'm looking at a deferral rather than then an outright. Yeah. Okay. It might be, it might be, but once we remove that.
Because there is a. I think it's the real determination. Protect Willow Road, the urban growth back down the middle. Uh, and the agricultural land. And planning for this local plan. And the extension won't be created. Some of the distance. Together. Want to do, uh. Day of us, if we're comfortable with not widening. Don't want to change the character. Pose the. Modification. Perfect. Comfortable again. The modification for the widening. We don't think it's necessary for this protection. And future. We're looking at that fractal more part of this, that fractal more west, the Walnut Street extension. Thirty. The purposes of traffic. The overall traffic study that was done is part of the Walnut Street extension. Looks at this realistic. And also looks at Willow Road, the large factor, the purpose of the development. South first. You did not.
Deferral. They're looking for a waiver.
Yeah, they're looking.
Yeah. They want to, what you're, you're saying a waiver on widening. But we have a waiver on widening on lot five. Is that a deferral or a waiver there? I'm saying if we have, they should be the same. I'm saying. Whatever it is.
Dave mentioned, Dave Miller mentioned that it was a deferral previously on that section.
Yeah, then I'm saying, well, yeah, there should be deferral here. I, I want to give, I, I, I don't want to tie the supervisor's hands here for future. I agree with you, I agree. I don't like to change Willow Road. I, I, hey, I live out there, I like Willow Road, I ride my bike there all the time. I like to keep it more rural and everything. But the same token, if you're changing it for the lot next door as a deferral. And you're not doing it there, doesn't make sense to me. It should be a deferral for both of them or something. Okay. I'm just saying. But it's your same complex, it's your whole development.
So if I. Understand the discussion tonight, you are giving the additional right of way you're showing on the plan. And, and you're in agreement, uh, from your presentation for curbing. But you're, you have no interest in ever widening that section of Willow Road.
Yeah. We prefer not to widen. I understand the rationale from the municipal side. From the landowner, from the first side. It's extremely. Because. You go through, everything has a budget. Everything has to perform. We're up the scene to the overall development scheme. And there's a possibility thirty years later, some of the townspeople said, we'd like you to widen this road from here to here. And if in fact, there was a possibility, the origin of Willow could be developed, I can understand. Municipal, general parts, et cetera. But we've already seen with that practical wall of our. Books dedicated shortly. Yaris wouldn't use them. Be funded. And the horseshoes that are on the road, uh, several of the bikes, et cetera. That's the character that we're looking to maintain, not on the wall of the road, but on this sort of road order. So again, I understand, Dan, what you're suggesting. We're asking for the recommendation. Why you like, we're okay with the very perfect. We can't really update any of the other comments. The end of the letter. We like to have planning department, et cetera. First, just because of. Strength.
All right, then, how would you feel about? Not deferring to curbing, but putting in the curbing now? There's one thing we find that we do a lot of deferring. It happens a lot of times with sidewalks and things like that. Never gets done down the road. We try to do it and it gets lost in the paperwork or something, it's a history of that. Yeah. If we're not gonna. If we're not ever going to improve that road, there's no reason why we shouldn't put the curbs in now. All right, you're not going to widen it down the road ever, okay? And that's the way it's going to be, we're going to keep it that way. You, you just put the curbs in now. I'm talking about Willow Road.
Wasn't taken into consideration. This plan. So we understand. So it doesn't. Why did it have that?
Yeah, we've lost a lot of them.
Okay, well, when we get to the motion, we'll see how we go. So just, my understanding, you're all right with one and two, three and four, we've discussed and the motion will pick that up. Item five, you didn't, on the sidewalks, uh, a condition was recommended. About easements, and I'm not requiring if you have done easements on your pedestrian walkways. Are you okay with the easements? You didn't really mention that, but. You're comfortable with that, okay? Cause I know you have a whole pedestrian pass plan throughout. Few hundred acres, but of, of Greenfield, et cetera. So you, so the easements you're okay with, just to be clear. And then you were fine with the other items and the couple of conditions. Zoning, you mentioned in, under item three, under zoning on page five. That would be a discussion, we don't have the ability here for forgiveness on zoning issues. That would be with the zoning officer.
No, that's.
And, right. Right. Yes, so that, so the zoning, we defer to, yes, the zoning officer and supervisors. So. For the townhouses. The road in front of the townhouses, will that, as far as an address, will that have a street name? Or are there mailboxes or how are you handling that? Will a street name be assigned there? House numbers for those twenty-eight townhouses? But the apartments and those five-story buildings are a, a different animal, but, yeah. So will that have a name assigned in there? Has one been?
One did not, they did not give. That, that's, I think, the follow discussion. Further for the final. And those offices. With the, the mailbox. So the idea is that the cross from the townhomes. Uh, Dave pointed out the pot and parking or four pots of twenty spaces across the townhomes. We'll have, we'll get used to. Mailboxes.
Okay. And then just as far as somebody visiting or coming to their. How, how are they numbered, how do you find them? I guess it's just something that would be an issue, uh, to locate them. And today it seems everybody uses Google, so how do you Google a box number? Yeah. The plan we have, and it might just be. My eyes for the rendered plan, but the second building from the top looks like a three unit. And not a seven, or is that just the graphics and I'm not, is it my eyes? Oh, okay. And it looks like there's a gap there, so I wasn't sure if that. Okay, thank you. You know, from here at that scale, it's. It's tricky. And, you know, we had this plan. Bus stops. Are they active in anywhere? Have you had that discussion yet? That there may be. I mean, and there are bus routes through Pitney, the, the nursing facility, you know, the, across the street and throughout your other areas. Is that? Have you thought of or where you would place bus stops, you have room for them?
We don't, we don't have any cooperation in the plan. Think about it, certainly will there.
Yeah, I mean, with that many people.
Is there one at the medical?
The banks, I'm sorry. There's, there's bus stop.
Okay. I was thinking there was one at the medical, but there's not one.
Yes.
I think the bus goes around the back of the building. And loops on, yeah. So it seems it make, yeah, it'd be logical to. Yeah, to them to add another loop to that route to accommodate this facility. But you would need to provide a, a bus stop area, yeah. And I'm not sure where that would work, uh, for you.
Do you have residents of the other, the other building that ever use a bus? Yeah. So there's no bus stop over at the other building either?
No, the residents of the reserve would either, if they were using a bus.
Any other questions, comments from here?
I'll just comment, I feel like I'm inclined to recommend. A waiver of the widening because I'm in the position where I don't think that Willow should be widened. So I, I think, and I kind of defer a little bit to township staff as well, that, you know, why do a deferral if there's no intention of ever intending to widen that road? That's just my, and, I mean, the curbing, I think it makes more sense to do all of the curbing on Willow at one time versus, you know, just portions. So, and, and plus the stormwater issues. So I would, you know, my, my thought is to, to defer the, the curbing. But waive the widening.
And just. So we're all on the same page, and, and Mark spoke to it a little bit. The deferral, um. Allows the township to address that issue in the future if it needs to occur, either widening or curbing or sidewalks. But then it would be at the expense of the landowner. If the township doesn't have an deferral or if they waive it, and in the future, the township decides it's important to. Make improvements to that road, it would be at the township. make improvements to that road, it would be at the township's expense. So. So it, it gives the township the option, and Mark said thirty years from now. Somebody decides it should be widened. With the waiver. The township would be responsible for the full cost of that. With a deferral, an agreement's put in place and it's recorded, and so. The developer here is saying they're in agreement to, if needed, pay for the curbing if it's decided to be done in the future. But are not interested in being. Responsible for the other improvements. Now, they are putting in the trail and the pathway, so that's kind of a done deal. That's already there. And the pathway system they're doing is very similar what they've done on other properties in the area with the more curvilinear walk instead of the hard straight walkway that follows the pathway. Precisely, yeah. And it works, and that's what they have here. So it's in character with the rest of the properties in the area.
Yeah.
But it, yeah, it's just the deferral of the cost.
Yeah, it's just a difficult, it's difficult for a landowner to, thirty years down the road, say, okay, now come back and widen that road.
Yeah. I think we'll know.
From my perspective. You gotta look at it from, is it needed now? Seem now. It's not even.
Yeah, the only thing that could affect it is the development of Lot Five. And we will know that within, since you develop that, when hopefully that's in the next. I'm getting your port, probably five years or more, I would hope. So I don't, we're, we aren't talking thirty years down the road. I don't think the township would ever come back and say, hey, you have to put widen this road now. They're gonna, if they're gonna want it, they're gonna want it when you develop, if at all, when Lot Five comes in. Yeah. But I'd like to leave that as an option.
Now widen, so without. Why? Why? That's a whole different. And I understand.
Yeah.
You think. Who would like these? That's bad. And I think. And it's not just our thing. It's called us by several representative township. That's where we're at. Willow Road.
I agree. But it could change, and it's still, yeah. I like to leave their option. I don't see there's a problem. We can. Yeah. No. And I agree, I, Willow Road, I, I like to leave it the way it is.
You know, I think Mark. You have to look at this in the big picture and within the context. You mentioned Lot Five. The other part of that context is the Walnut Street extension. And you've got Ben Franklin here, easily connecting to Ben Franklin West Walnut Street. So this whole massive one taking, which is going to bear fruit in the next year, year and a half to start to comprehensively address traffic, greenfield. In, in, in this, in this area, it's really designed in a lot of ways to keep the character of Willow the way it is. And I would say any user on Lot Five. Just as we mentioned, the. Here, and the folks at Bayous and others in Greenfield North are really going to use. Ben Franklin to Walnut Street throughout.
And Lot Five, Lot Five is not going to enter onto correctly on the Willow Road, right? If they probably enter on to Ben Franklin, right?
Yeah, so, so this whole landing effort, this whole. It's been geared to directing traffic in a different way. That's why we're going to take this stand down.
Yeah, one of the things that has concerned me a little bit about Ben Franklin, I think it's a great thing, that the effect it will have on Willow Road east of there. Now, that's nothing you can, you know, you're not doing anything, but I can see more traffic coming down from. Yeah, you know, Whitmer and that, you know, rather than going down with three forty and getting on it at three forty or at thirty, getting on thirty there, they might come through and shoot down through the, because it's going to be a nice direct access and getting on the Walnut Street and everything. But parts of Walnut, or Willow Road might get a little busy, but that's, that's east of what we're talking about too, so. Yeah, well, I think that, yeah, I think the consensus is the. Willow Road is nice the way it is. And to the north of Willow is agriculture. Learning that's mentioned. And. Some thirty, forty years ago, a developer attempted to develop land to the north and didn't get, obviously didn't get it through. So, and that appears it hasn't changed, because there's a couple of single-family homes, lots over there. Forget the road off of Willow that goes north. Or, and, or, but anyway, there's only a couple of homes in there, and the development, the developer came in, that's at least thirty, maybe forty or whatever, was not successful in developing that farm land, so. But I, yeah, see, Roger.
So I, I'm going to second what Sarah's said. I'm, I'm for the deferral and the curbing, but I think we have to respect the investment of Ben Franklin, which really is probably the key to this whole project as far as the traffic movement. That coupled up with the Walnut Street extension. And, you know, for the next twenty, thirty years, I don't see any pressure on, on Willow, Willow Road, because everything's being pushed that way. And as far, as far as people getting on Willow Road, I mean. It's going to happen just by default. But, so I'll go in the record saying I'll take the curb deferral. But don't widen Willow and don't do any curbs until. You do something with Willow. I, I just can't stand seeing curbs without. It don't make sense when they, when they're sitting out in, yeah. That's the word I wanted, in isolation. I think, you know, it, it ruins the, the view. So I think, I think we should honor what, what the high companies did with Ben Franklin, putting in, in that whole structure, that infrastructure going out to Walnut Street Extension. That's, that's the whole key to this. Set of lots that you're developing.
So if we go the way of discussion, before I presume before the supervisor, you'll submit a written request for the deferral as opposed to the waiver. Right? Put in a writing, yeah, depending on the recommendation tonight, yeah. Any comments from the public? Or any, anybody on Zoom have any? Oh, yes.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I can hear you, yeah. I just wanted to point out that when the Zook Yoda Res Project came in originally and then was revised, the plan was approved and, and Colin was not around at this time. So he wouldn't necessarily have this background. The plan was approved with deferrals on Willow and Greenfield for both Lot One and Lot Five, until the land development actually came in for each of those for the board to decide at that point in time. So although Mr. McKeon Reese is a good comment about if Lot Five has it. The original discussion was they should both have it until the land development came in for the board to decide at that point.
Okay, thank you, Tara.
Yep.
Any other? Comment? Discussion? If not. Look for a motion. From this side of the table. There are curbs going in on Greenfield. Coming down, right? Okay. Looking here in front of, see that.
Greenfield is already curved.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's already curving there on Greenfield. From, from Willow. All the way down, yeah. Yeah.
All right, I'll do it. Or I'll attempt to do it. For item number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, Greenfield North Phase Three Final Land Development Plan Five Thirty Four Willow Road. I recommend, that we recommend that the. Plan gets approved with the. In compliance and have it comply with David Miller Associate's letter dated September ninth, twenty twenty-one. With the exception of. We would recommend that a waiver be given for the requirement to widen Willow Road. And a deferral for item four on that letter, which is curbing. Which is inconsistent with that, which is consistent with this review letter. And then also that they comply with the Langsor County Planning Department's letter dated July sixteen, twenty twenty-one, with the exception of comments one and two, that they don't have to comply with that. Am I missing anything?
And. I believe you inferred that they would come in compliance with all other items of David Miller's letter.
Yes.
Yeah, they recommend. That's true, yeah. So her motion is to not comply with the county's comments one and two. So when you're, when you're saying costs going over that stream, what do we, I mean. Yes, thousands of millions. Well.
Yeah, if, if it's a joint project. The federal state department. Going before.
It's probably getting that much into it. Yeah, I mean, it's something that could be developed later. It doesn't have to be developed right away or something, something. Do, but I didn't know if it's, you know. If it was. We have a wooden bridge or something over there, I think, yeah. We have a motion on the table. We'll look for a second. And we have the motion in second, any discussion? Not? All those in favor? Nikki, by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
We have the four ayes, therefore none opposed or abstaining. Thank you. And I would like to thank you for cleaning up that first letter. It's much appreciated, without giving numbers, you eliminated two-thirds of the comments. And, and narrowed it down, so we had a healthy discussion, but I can only imagine if we had the original letter, what's tonight? So thank you for that effort, and, and also to the township staff. Yes, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, next. Yeah, the next item of business is Plan Number Twenty Twenty-One Dash Nineteen, that Darren Phillips sketch plan for twenty-nine thirty-nine Lincoln Highway East. We have a representative here for. That plant. So we're going once. For the Darren Phillips sketch plan. Okay, if there's nobody present at this time, we'll defer that till later in the meeting. In the event that somebody shows. So next item under new business is Plan Twenty Twenty-One Dash Twenty Gap Brothers Holding. It's a. Village Commercial Text Amendment. Give us a moment to shuffle some papers here. Thank you. Yep, we're good to go, thank you.
My name's Peter Wirtz. You can use Wilson here as well. Here tonight with Tim Byer, Gap Brothers Holdings, Palco, Paradise Energy Solutions, Steve Gerdley, Harbor Engineering. As you may recall, we came before the Planning Commission informally on June eighth, twenty twenty-one to discuss a proposed text amendment to the Village Commercial zoning district to allow by right a use that would incorporate vertical integration of office warehouse use. Following those discussions, we had worked with township staff to smooth out the details of petition and ordinance. We also went before the audit supervisors on June twenty-first, but likewise have a formal discussion of effectiveness ordinance. On July fourteenth, we submitted the petition and the amendment to the zoning ordinance. July nineteenth, the supervisors accepted and referred it out to this planning commission as well as the Langsor County Planning Department. August thirteenth, we received a staff memorandum from Langsor County Planning Department. This constituted a formal recommendation on the part of the department based on protocols. In that letter, LCPD relatively briefly recommends to approve or adopt. We're here tonight to ask all planning commissions for recommendations of all supervisors to approval of the proposed zoning amendments. Or the supervisor, we're hearing this scheduled for September twentieth, Monday. Just to briefly recap what was included in the proposed text amendment, essentially permitted by right. Looks defined as an integrated commercial enterprise in the Village Commercial District, subject to certain specific criteria. And a village, an integrated commercial development enterprise, excuse me, is defined as a use incorporating an office and a warehouse used that intertwine function as one operation at the same lot. So it's incorporating the vertical, vertical integration that was discussed back in June with this planning commission. It has some control limitations on it, including block area requirements. Also a requirement that the maximum amount of warehouse be capped at twenty thousand square feet and be less than the amount of office use that is committed on the property. In the. Weeks after meeting originally with the planning commission, we were closing the home area fleshouts, including the details of the petition. So with that, I will turn it over to the planning commission for any questions that you might have with respect to the petition.
I have one question, so staff review. I mean, we got a Langsor County staff review, but do we have, do the township staff review of this? Or what, your recommendations are, I mean, it's into this, you know, we're looking for some kind of review from either an engineer or, you know, staff, kind of relying on that? Have we had any? Okay, so just, there's just. Nothing here that says you reviewed it or anything in that respect. And it's something that normally we would get with the staff review or something of this order.
Does everybody know the parcel or the land that we're referring to? And specific to a, to the gap where they're holding, it's like down Route Thirty.
It's down Thirty, it's at the intersection of.
And if I recall from three months ago. And if I recall from three months ago. This amendment. The only parcel that'll be affected currently would be that parcel, with the two to 10 acre range. And there aren't any other lands that at this point would be impacted by this amendment, I believe, was part of our discussion three months ago.
It was limited severely based on the criteria, there may be one or two other parcels located. Last down, it was very, I'm not sure exactly how many that would be, but it was limited. I know that in the Langsor County Planning Department memo, they indicate that there's 13 parcels or something like that would be affected, but that was not incorporating the criteria that we included. The voice of zoning law states that primary access.
Okay.
So that was actually a factual error there on Capel CPD. Now, it's not that high.
Yeah, they indicated 15 out of the 137 parcels within the VC, the Village Commercial.
Considered the criteria that limits access of the township.
Yeah.
Daryl, there is one other parcel that's affected, it's off of Sylvan Lane, which is at the very eastern end of the township. And it currently hosts the antique shop. However, that property, although it has the acreage, that property is split between the VC District and Agricultural District.
That was the other part of my check, I need to note of at the time this passes, only those parcels that comply with it are eligible. If there's an attempt to combine properties or change lot sizes, it's it's not done now before this passes, it's not gonna. Yeah, so that's a critical element for the township staff to comply with, yeah. Any other comments, questions, this side?
If we approve this, that they are, send it on, would the staff have any objection of attaching a letter or recommendation to this supervisor if you have reviewed this, so it's on record?
Yeah.
Because I just feel that we need to have a staff review of some sort, whether to say it's our bill.
And I think, well, that'll be recorded in the minutes this evening, but an acknowledgement by staff that they are in in concurrence with this amendment, the Village Commercial. As part of it, I'm sure that'll be shared with supervisors. So, nothing further, I'll look for a motion to recommend approval of this. Okay, so we have a motion, on a second?
Second.
And a second court, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Eyes carry, unopposed, abstaining, so thank you. Next item of business is Plan 2021 dash 24 Sylvan Fisher subdivision land development deferral for property of 2816 Irish Town Road.
My name is Amber Rennett, I'm with Team Ag. Sylvan Fisher is proposing to construct an agricultural building on his property at 2816 Irish Town Road. I'm new to this property. The building will be an agricultural co-op building, used for twelve local farmers to rent produce, be stored there. That will then get picked up by grocery stores and local supermarkets for sale. No, no commercial or retail will take place at the building. So, I think I see that currently, currently Sylvan, Sylvan has right on the property that located on the
Can you show us the line, or just point to the township line, thank you, just to clarify?
So the majority of the property is currently in its tenure, the entirety of the proposed development, so building assets, drives, and also water. It's also, except the bylaws, break off the piece to only be located in Lake Park, and it's also taking a piece from
And Irish Town runs along, yes, and does the it comes up on the lower part of the dark property line, it does a sharp left, and then up in a sharp right, and, okay, so so access would be directly off of the road in Laycock Township. There you go, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so there would be access, access at two different points. The northern, northern entrance would basically be for the employees, but then also the farmers, that would be dropping, dropping workers' office. Instead of, instead of the board, we'd have some local docs for the staff. But what we're here for this evening is to discuss the fact that
So, we have a letter from Team Ag, and as he just mentioned, the proposed building. All the site improvements and stormwater management facilities are located entirely in the Laycock Township. We do have a planning review by staff, and it also indicates that same, that the proposed building site improvements are all located entirely in Laycock Township, and staff recommendation is to defer to Laycock Township, the review. There would be a signature on our part, because part of this plan is a subdivision of the lands that are split between the township, but then there'll be just a parcel left in, which would be lot two, would be left solely in Eastland Peter Township, and then lot one, which is divided into one A and one B, would be all in Laycock Township where the development's occurring. So. We're
What, what are the improvements on the lot two that's going to remain? Yeah, the existing improvement, I'm just curious what the use of this property is.
Yes, I think it's a total, I believe there's, there's, well, there are
And is the rest farmland?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, those are greenhouse, I wouldn't trip that as greenhouse or chicken coops or southern greenhouse. Okay, and yeah, from the plan we have, it could go either way, yeah. Little but it's on the screen, it's better, there are a number of buildings there now that are yeah, it's much better there, but, yeah. I was challenged to read this, yeah. Yeah. So we would just be deferring our review of the proposed improvements, as he explained, which are all in Laycock Township. So we would have a signature responsibility once it is approved by Laycock, because of the subdivision of the lot separation. Any more comments, questions, not? Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion, item number 2021 dash 24 Sylvan Fisher subdivision land development deferral 2816 the Irish Town Road. I would recommend that we recommend to the supervisors to defer the review and approval of the subdivision land development and stormwater management plan to Laycock Township.
Thank you, so we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raising your hand, four ayes, so thank you, approved.
So this other one's not showing up.
So, item 5B under new business, the Darren Phillips Sketch Plan. Just note that the meeting room is empty. So there's nobody present here, just the question, is there anybody on Zoom to represent the, is there anybody on Zoom other than Tara? Okay, so the only person that zoomed in is Tara with the township, so there's not anybody present.
With this being a sketch plan, we, it just was kind of a review anyways, wasn't it? It wasn't required any approvals, right?
This is a an expanded sketch plan for this property, we did see this a couple of months ago. Where as a briefing item.
Yeah.
In my review, I not noted any changes. You know, the letter that we have from our engineer has many zoning issues, and to my knowledge, they have not today scheduled any meeting with zoning train board to address, as this letter has 11 issues, and some of those are significant. And really, I don't think we would have the ability to even comment on the sketch plan at this point, given those numerous zoning issues. The consultant, or the attorney for the owner, did submit a request for an extension. But and it seems pointless.
I would, I would recommend some action be taken, being that in the event that the board does not, does not approve the extension, there will have to be some type of recommendation on this plan, even though it is a sketch. But like you mentioned, there are numerous zoning, outstanding zoning issues, the township has not received a zoning hearing board application for these. And we don't know when, so that's where, that's where we're at.
Do they have a time limit here on this, or do they need an extension at this point?
Um, a sketch can be considered, I guess, a preliminary plan, so NPC timelines, I think, would be a concern here, however, with outstanding zoning issues. That's, that's where we're at, so.
So are the prudent for us this to full extension to the next township planning commission?
Well. Given all of the items in this review letter and all the outstanding zoning issues. In my opinion, I think it'd be irresponsible for us to move this forward in any manner, until those numerous issues are addressed, and I don't know if there's any other comments. I would make a motion that we deny approval of this plan, such as it is before us this evening. Unless the supervisors address an extension, unless they address an extension, but given that there's, you know, it is not something we can really act on, given all the items that are unresolved with zoning. It's really not ready for us to see, so being here before us, there's nothing for us to approve, but I would recommend not approving. I'm kind of talking, yes, so my motion is to not approve the submission we have before us this evening.
I second that motion.
And so we have the motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Raise your hand, so, your eyes carry, thank you.
Just get rid of it for now.
So, we have briefing item for Plan 2021 dash 25, the Strudler property, final land development, Colin, is that yours?
Yes, it is, so, yeah, the Strudler property, or commonly known as Ballorbs. That 2599 Old Philadelphia Pike, they submitted a land development plan. They're proposing two commercial buildings, one up near the frontage and then one in the back, so you'll be seeing that at a, at a future PC meeting.
So this would be tonally new building.
Correct. Brand new.
Okay. Can you expect, no, that'll come in as a final, not a, yeah. So thank you, other business, none at this time, any announcements? None, none, if not, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Well, we have a motion, we have the motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are we, are we done recording? We're, it's off.